Good afternoon, welcome to City Council Meeting for May 10th, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined, and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I will call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, could we have confirmation of the agenda posting and the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law, and all members are present.
Thank you. And we will begin with the invocation by Pastor David Graham. If you would all rise, please.
Well, I pray, I'm so thankful that we still do this in Boulder City. Isn't that cool? Can we have fun with it?
Dear Father in heaven, I thank you for your blessings in our lives. We thank you, Lord, for this beautiful little town, its city council, the mayor, the city departments, the police, fire personnel, the Chamber of Commerce members, and so many of the wonderful citizens here who care about our environment and the quality of life that we enjoy here, Lord. Thank you for your faithfulness, your eternal love, and your mercy. Now bless this meeting, Lord. Let calm minds and clear thinking dominate. Lord, may your will be done as much as possible in the decisions that are made. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Graham, and yes, we should have a little fun every once in a while with the invocation. It's a good thing. All right, Madam City Clerk, public announcements?
Yes, we have two speakers, Public Works Director Keegan Littrell and Linda Graham would like to announce.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, or evening, I guess. Keegan Littrell, Public Works Director, for the record. Just wanted to announce that I have a proclamation here proclaiming that next week, May 15th through May 21st of 2022, is recognized as National Public Works Week. And I have our up and coming APWA, American Public Works Association Chair. He will be the Chair starting in July. His name's Andrew Howard. You want to come up and say your word?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keegan. I want to just introduce myself, Andrew Howard. I'm with Westwood Professional Services. I'm a project manager, civil engineer, and here on behalf of American Public Works Association, we want to thank the council, Keegan, the public works folks out here for supporting our cause and, you know, recognizing that public works is important and our organization. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank the mayor again and the council for all your hard work. And I was here a couple of weeks ago to announce the Historic Preservation Day on May 14th, which is this coming Saturday, but I wanted to invite the city and all of the people that live here to come and visit our day. I think you might really enjoy it. We have workshops planned in the morning, and we have a panel discussion at lunchtime, and the businesses are going to be open for lunch, having a special, so come and enjoy and eat lunch downtown, which is the historic district, and then we'll go out to the railroad. So, I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you. All right, we will go to our first public comment period. Public comment during this period must be items listed on the agenda. Speakers will have up to five minutes, and as always, we ask that you be civil and concise. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak in the initial public comment period? All right, we will take anyone wishing to call in at this time. The phone number is 702-589-9629. And this is our initial public comment period. If you wish to speak, please call 702-589-9629. This is the initial public comment period for the City Council Meeting. Anyone wishing to call in, the phone number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the initial public comment?
Yes, I have two public comments.
Please go ahead.
The first one was submitted by Luann Carlisle. As both a dog owner and a grandparent of kids who enjoy the skate park, I hope you will have the common sense to keep the two far apart. Having the dog park near the skate park is asking for trouble. Dogs naturally are upset by anything on wheels. It would be a matter of time before someone is hurt due to the combination. Thank you. Second written comment was submitted by Jeffrey Parker. I strongly support a dog park at Veterans Memorial Park, but I do not support the proposal for using the baseball fields with the fence in the outfield. While I understand the temptation to minimize the cost to modify the existing fields to make them acceptable for dogs, I submit to you that this is not a good solution for either the dogs or a community. If you actually go back and look at the facilities, a good portion of this supposed dog park area is dirt. Each field has a large area in the warning track of the outfield fence that is dirt. The actual grass area is small and a poor excuse for a real dog park. There is neither shade nor water, and it is obvious that it is an attempted hybrid solution that will mess with the current baseball facilities and create a dog park that satisfies just about nobody. As I have painfully learned over the years, you get what you pay for. This proposal should be called what it is, what it really is, an attempt to fill the need of a large dog owner population here in Boulder City with an easy fix just to say we did something. The city needs to bite the bullet and do one of two things. First, I think it should give adequate resources to modify Seaspot Run Dog Park to meet the needs of shade, turf, lighting, and space. This park is great, but shouldn't be on the shoulders of Sandra and the other volunteers, and it shouldn't depend solely on private funding. We donate to the park and use it often, but it's an obvious need of expensive modifications that need to be addressed. Why is this not being looked at seriously? The city should either offer to take over the burden of running Seaspot Run Dog Park, or it should be heavily involved in partnering with the current volunteer staff to make the much-needed changes. If this isn't desirable or even possible, then my second suggestion is to build a fenced area on the lighted soccer multi-use fields in Veterans Memorial Park and designate it for dog use. This field is huge and is rarely filled to capacity. The area to the south along the tree line would be ideal to build a fenced enclosure for dogs to run free. It already has grass, it already has lighting, it's large enough to accommodate all needs, and it is preferred area that is already being used by dog owners. The fence will solve the issue of trying to set aside times for dog usage that was previously suggested and was shot down. This fenced area will fill all the needs of a new park without having to build one from scratch. I think the reduction in size of the soccer field will be absorbed by the benefits of having the dogs contained in a fenced area. Surely, it will cost to build the fence and some shade cover, but it would be much cheaper than starting from scratch, and it is already a preferred spot for most dog park users. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Again, anyone in council chambers that would like to speak in the initial public comment period? All right, hearing no others, we will close the public comment period. Move to approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Council members, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Move to approval of the regular agenda. Again, Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. City Council members, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
Anyone wishing to make a motion?
I move for approval of the regular agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that brings us to our first item of the regular agenda then, item number nine, Presentation of the 2022 Historic Preservation Award. Ms. Graham, did you want to make comment regarding this award?
Yes. Okay, we're proud to announce that this year's award goes to the home of 421 Birch Street. The McIntyre House at 421 Birch Street, located within the Boulder City Historic District as listed in the National Register of Historic Places. The McIntyre residence was selected for this award because, thanks to the care of the current and past owners, the property is an important contributing resource of the Boulder City Historic District. The Spanish ranch-style home built in 1938 retains its original features, including red clay barrel-like stucco roof, stucco walls, and wood double-hung windows. As determined by the 2020 updated survey of the district, this property is eligible for individual listing in the National Register of Historic Places under the following criteria. Criteria A, for its association with the early development of Boulder City as an intact residential property constructed by the Los Angeles Bureau of Power and Light. And Criterion C, as an intact example of the Spanish ranch style. And this award is presented on May 10th, and there is also a bronze plaque that goes with the award. The homeowner is present, and let's see. We're proud to have chosen this very prestigious award, and I'll call Susan McIntyre up now. She wants to say a few words.
And I would just note that Ms. Graham is our current Historic Preservation Committee Chair, and Ms. McIntyre is a former Chair of the Historic Preservation Committee.
Well, I wasn't ever Chair, but I was a member of the committee.
My apologies.
I chose not to be Chair so that I could be as outspoken as possible.
There you go.
And Susan Denialitz was always there to keep order.
Thank you.
I just want you all to know how pleased I am. And I want to say that my home at 421 Birch Street is one year older than me, so that makes us both historic entities. The Stice family, my grandfather Stice brought the family here to work when he came to work on the dam, and we stayed. And so I was raised here, and the city was very important to me. And I left to go to university, but I always came back for class reunions, and in the 90s, I came back two or three times a year to visit friends and family. And when I was here in 1999, knowing that I wanted to move back here within a couple of years, I was at B's Business Service doing work for my job in Detroit that came up unexpectedly, and I decided to drive down Birch Street because I hadn't been down Birch Street for quite a while. And there was a for sale sign at 421 Birch, and I knew that house. I had a friend who lived there. I had been in that house so many times, so I got to work on figuring out how I could buy it. So, it worked out. And Nielseniken, who had bought that house out of, when it was auctioned from LA, had maintained it in good condition, and I want you to know, those homes built by LA were solid as rock. I had the house inspected before I bought it by a company, and they just couldn't believe the quality of the work that was done to build those houses on Birch Street. So, I just wanted you all to know that and to know how proud I am for this award. I never would have expected it, but, and I will maintain the integrity of that house as I have interior as well as exterior, because I think those homes are so important. And so anyway, thank you so much for this. I appreciate it. I feel honored, and I'm just so pleased to have that home as my home.
Don't leave yet, we have the pack for you.
We're going to have a picture, so. Oh. So what do you do? Well, let's see, Kernis, do you want Susan Lyde to come up?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Do you? Just go to where it's on. Yeah, let's all get it. Come on. How's it going? Thank you. Congratulations, Susan. We have the Historic Preservation Committee. They're very proud of you.
well. They, you know, solicit this, recommendations, and then review the property. I think this is an excellent example of the earliest homes here in Boulder City, and as Ms. McIntyre had said, extremely well-maintained and represents the earliest days of our city. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number 10 is Introduction of Bill Number 1915, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City to amend Title 11 of the City Code Regarding Landscape. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this is a bill introduction.
Okay. Anyone wishing to introduce Bill Number 1915?
I move to introduce Bill Number 1915, Wave at the Rating by Title Only.
Bill Number 1915, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, Nevada, to amend Title 11 of the City Code, Section 11-25-6A, Regarding Landscaping for Multifamily Uses, AM-22-357. Bill Number 1915 will be considered at the May 24th, 2022 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Item number 11, Consideration of Bill Number 1914, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, Regarding City Code 7-1-8, Indecent Obscene Language, Repealing This in Its Entirety. I had requested this item and conferred with Madam City Attorney on complaints I've received from residents primarily regarding some flags that have appeared in different areas of town with vulgar language on them. The City Attorney had looked into this, looked into our current ordinance, subsequent Supreme Court decisions. This ordinance dates back to the beginning of Boulder City in 1960, and the opinion is that with the current court situation, court decisions, we cannot enforce it. I do find it unfortunate when people put things like this out in the public, especially when there are children walking by these homes and being exposed to this type of thing. But hey, it's freedom of speech, and I certainly don't have an issue with freedom of speech, but sometimes you wonder about freedom of thought as people display these types of things. But it does us no good to have an ordinance like this within our code if we're unable to enforce it. Madam City Attorney, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, Mayor, but I'm available for questions if the council has any.
All right. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, thank you. I recognize that this isn't enforceable and that also it's unconstitutional, really, in nature, but I guess my question would be this. I know that we're paying, and I've asked this before, money to revise our code and take a look at codes that need to be changed or need to be deleted possibly, and I guess my concern would just be, are we doing this one at a time before we send this to people with ones that we see need to be done so that it lessens the bill?
A couple of things in response to your questions. This had started well over a year ago, probably even two years ago, before the discussion about an entire rewrite of our city code. This ordinance is sort of self-standing. It doesn't really rely on any others. Madam City Attorney, is that an accurate description?
Well, each ordinance, any bill would have to be a single subject, so if you're asking whether this would have to be a standalone bill...
No, what I'm getting at is this particular section of the code is not dependent on other sections of the code, where we may find that to be the case on some of these that either refer to or are dependent on the types of enforcement, that type of thing. This pretty much is a section that stands on its own within the code, applying to a specific issue that is no longer enforceable.
Yes, there's no other provisions of our ordinances that are dependent upon this statute or this ordinance.
Okay. So, as to whether it facilitates the rewrite, I don't think so, but this has certainly been an issue that has been brought to my attention. Residents have, you know, referred to this specific language and said, you know, well, we have this on the books, why can't we do something about, again, these very vulgar statements that are being made? You know, unfortunately, the answer is, we can't.
Right, and I don't disagree with that, and I don't disagree with the idea of doing this. I just guess, in the future, I'd like to see anything that deals with city code be done all at once since we're investing $500,000 of ARPA funds. I'd like to see that wait in the future.
And again, you know, this predates any discussion about that code, entire code revision, but I think when we come to a situation like this, that work could take a year or more to do. You know, there are things that we can take care of without having to wait for that, but certainly we should not be looking for issues within the code. But if they come up, and clearly they are no longer acceptable within the current law, then we should not hesitate to remove them. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
You know, yeah, I just think this is something that needs to be addressed now because it's an issue that we are dealing with now. And, you know, when it comes to issues like that, that is when we need to address it because to wait any longer could leave people, leave people hanging on what it is that they're supposed to do or expected to do. So, on another note, in two days, May 12th, would have been George Carlin's 85th birthday, so it seems as fitting a time as any to pass this.
Would you care to elaborate on Mr. Carlin's? Is it seven, seven words you can't say on the radio?
I won't say it on the record either.
Again, I, you know, certainly we can find some humor in things. The examples that have been referred to me by residents, somebody may find some humor in them. I just find it very difficult to understand why this long-term display of this type of thing is done, but if we can't do anything about it, then there's no point in having language within our code that gives an indication that something could be done. Anyone else? I will move then for approval of Bill Number 1914.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We'll move to item number 12, Resolution 7457. Ms. Pelletier?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Resolution Number 7457 authorizes pursuant to NRS 268.063, direct negotiations to the lease of real property located at, located approximately .6 miles south of the US 95 Interstate 11 interchange along the west side to Townsite Solar 2 to develop, construct, and operate a utility-scale solar facility upon the terms and conditions of a lease option agreement to be negotiated with the city. The new project will cover approximately 88 acres. Nevada Revised Statute 268.063, also known as the Economic Development Exception, allows local governments to lease property directly to a developer without first putting it out to bid, when doing so is for the purposes of redevelopment or economic development. To qualify as economic development, the project must meet at least one of four criteria. This project meets the requirement that the project expands an existing commercial enterprise or facility within the city, in this case, the adjacent Townsite Solar Facility. The site has been appraised by two independent appraisers, which valued the lease rate between 1,500 and 2,500 per acre. Under state law, the minimum lease rate is the average of the two appraisals, or 2,000 per acre per year. City staff is recommending approval of Resolution 7457. We'll be happy to answer any questions you have. If I can't answer them, Barack will.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I know clearly, you know, we are allowed to do this, to allow for this exemption. I'm curious, why is it that we believe that this would be in Boulder City's best interest to do this rather than going out for a bit?
Primarily for the size of the site, it's only eighty-eight acre, eighty-eight acres. We can generate between fifteen to twenty megawatts, depending on the technology used. It's one thing to generate solar electricity, but then you have to be able to deliver it to market. The nearest available substation that has available space to tap into the substation or the national grid is the Eldorado Substation, which is roughly ten miles south of there. Construction per mile of roughly six to ten million dollars per mile to run overhead transmission to the substation. The gen tie line or generation tie line would easily exceed the cost of the project itself, making it not pencil. This particular instance, the developer has a shared use arrangement with the substation connection for the Mead Substation, negating the need to have a ten-plus-mile tie line down to one of the available substation connections down in the southern end of the Eldorado Valley. So that's the primary reason, the size of the parcel and the ability to generate electricity.
So it's a matter of practicality than anything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I know that this particular project has come up for some discussion regarding the vote from the Planning Commission. I think that the explanation that Mr. Armentraut just gave is one indication of why this project should move forward. It's pretty clear that this particular parcel of land is going to be best utilized by making an extension of the most recent project that was completed. It allows for that company to simply tie into the project they just completed. So I will make a motion to approve Resolution seventy-four fifty-seven.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Pelletier and Mr. Armentraut.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, discussion and staff direction regarding possible sites for a municipal dog park. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, our Public Works Director Roger Hall will be handling this item, going over several proposed layouts for dog parks. Roger?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Roger Hall, Parks and Recreation Director for the great city of Boulder City. Item number thirteen on the agenda today is a discussion and staff, three separate sites for a possible dog park facility at Veterans Memorial Park. On the March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two city council meeting, city council directed staff to evaluate and provide site plan alternatives for a dog park at Vets Park. Three different sites were evaluated by Public Works and Parks and Recreation staff. The first site evaluated was an existing softball field at Veterans Memorial Park, and we have, the site is about one point six acres. In talking with the Public Works Landscape Division and members of the public, there are many positive qualities associated with this site. The impact is on one field instead of two fields. The site can be made into a dedicated dog park, opened Monday through Sunday, dawn to dusk. There will be no sharing of the softball field with Little League, Parks and Recreation, tournaments, and field rentals. This will limit the potential issues between dog owners and parents and players using the other three fields at the time. Construction costs should be less as you're dealing with one field as opposed to two. The field is big enough so you can put dividing fences in for three separate areas to accommodate small, medium, and large dogs. And the parking for the field is located at the back of the field, allowing dog owners to access without interaction between dogs, children, parents, and using the other three fields. Park amenity costs should be lower as only one field is being outfitted, and maintenance costs for the facility should be less as you do not have to maintain baseball on one side of a fence and then dog park on the other side of the fence. The softball field is the least used of this four-field complex, and the restrooms are located in the concession building right next to the softball field. The second site evaluated were the two fields, one and four, that were previously discussed before city council, and this concept uses the outfield on baseball, two baseball fields as a dog park, and that equates to about one acre per field. This concept uses two fields as opposed to one. The two fields will not be a dedicated dog park, and it would have to be shared with Little League, Parks and Recreation tournaments, and other special events. This double use of the field could possibly cause, again, problems between dog owners and baseball players and spectators possibly wanting to use the dog park. And according to the Public Works Department, this concept would increase maintenance costs on the two fields as they would have to deal with baseball and dog park requirements, two totally separate items. Parking for this concept would be at the front of the fields on the asphalt parking. The third site evaluated was the site located in the grass area east of the skate park. This is approximately point five-five acres. This area obviously is much smaller than the other field sites. The terrain is uneven, including the hills, and there's no perimeter fencing at the site. There would be an increase in construction costs because you have to put a separation fence, perimeter fencing, and gates, and amenities. There's no restroom near the skateboard park, they'd have to walk to the other side of the west side of the park by the concession building, and the site is next to an existing private dog park. Staff is asking the city council to discuss the three alternative sites and provide staff direction regarding a designated site for dog park in, at Veterans Memorial Park. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, first off, thank you for bringing back, as we asked, the three different, and one actually, brand-new option, which is softball field number three. After looking at all of these, I see that as the least intrusive and actually a place where it would be its own designated dog park. So, I mean, I kind of like that idea, and I can see that it would alleviate some of the problems that have been brought to our attention about the Little League and the dog park conflict.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, I have a comment on each. First of all, I don't like at all the idea around the skate park. I particularly had a dog that was not fond of anything on wheels, and it seems to be something that some dogs do react to, so the idea of kids and wheels in the vicinity of a dog park didn't work. My problem with the two separate fields and then having to allow for other activities is there's nothing as frustrating as getting your dog in the car, going down to the ball field, and finding the gates locked. And when that original group put together that opportunity to use field number three, when not in use by anybody else, a lot of times, the gate was locked when we arrived, and that makes for unhappy people and unhappy dogs. The third, I thought, was great. I like the idea of one particular ball field that it, and I made sure I got that comment from you, that it would not be closed to other activities or used for anything else. My feeling is if you want to get people used to using a dog park, it has to be accessible seven days a week. And I did want to ask, would it be possible in any way to put a pergola or a covered area in each one, just like there is, I think, at the small dog park at Sea Spot Run?
Yeah, part of the amenities for the proposed dog park would be a variety of things, and one is a shade structure, one is signs showing the rules and regulations so people will know them when they bring their dogs to the site. You're talking a water fountain, we're talking, there's a water fountain located on the concession building, and we were going to, at a suggestion of one of the councilmen, possibly make it into a dog-friendly water station where you have watering, you can water your dog on the bottom part, and then you can water yourself on the top part. And so basically, that could be easily done at the concession building. Also, the signs, you know, you have stations where you have the bags to pick up the dog waste. We're trying to make it into a first-class facility there, and I think we proposed about fifteen thousand dollars to do that.
Now, what about that triangular area where the ball field is? What would be done with that?
There would be a fence across there to make it symmetrical, so when you put the separation fences to separate the small, medium, and large dogs, it would be symmetrical, and you wouldn't have a point where you're putting a dog in a crush point or in a close area like that.
Okay, great, yeah. My question was on the, what kind of amenities would be there? Because I know that that, the person who wrote in suggested that it didn't allow for any covered area.
Well, that with that dirt area actually would be a pretty good place to put a covered area, or you could use the warning tracker, I mean, and put benches around the whole perimeter of the thing, or one bench or two benches per separation for people to sit down and watch their dogs, so.
I'm glad to see that it's more than just a grass area with a fence, so the idea of amenities is fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fox?
Yeah, I think ball field number three is definitely the best option to have access seven days a week for everybody. As far as the amenities, is there a way we could get some, like, obstacles in there for the dogs? I know I have a real hyper dog that would love to run up and down some obstacles at the dog park.
This is a quote that we got from a company that provides amenities for dog parks. Complete dog waste station with single pull bag dispenser, dog paw benches in-ground, aluminum dog park rule signs, dog park signs, please clean up after your dog, a dog walk ramp, which is three foot high, so the dog can walk, you know, you can train your dog to walk off the ground, double hoop jump, agility walk, triple level jump, stainless steel dog watering station, twenty-two gallon pet waste only receptacle with lid, and that type of thing. So we are, you know, proposing to put this stuff out once we get approval from city council.
All right, perfect, no, I think it's a great option. Now, that triangle, it's all dirt now.
That's correct.
Would you guys pave it or grass it?
We would look at possibly putting, we don't want to put live grass in there because you'd have to have an irrigation, and with the lake being the way it is, we want to not do that, but we might be able to put artificial turf down and then put the shade structure right there, and it would make it real nice. And there would be no maintenance on that as well.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. I guess what I liked about the, using the outfield was that because those outfield aren't used in play, that it allows for us to still maintain the fields for use for the sport, but then also allows us to kind of double-use this area of grass that's otherwise not really being utilized. So I, for me, that seems, I saw that as a benefit. I understand the concern that there would be conflict and that not every time, you know, a dog, somebody who would want to go to the dog park might not be able to because it is in use. I get a little concerned, it's not that I'm overly concerned, it's just I've heard from people who, you know, they play softball down at that field, and, you know, that they don't want to see their one field here get, you know, taken out when there's, you know, two of the other types of fields. But I had a question, there is grass areas in between these parks, and in particular, it looks like between the, what I'm guessing is the hardball field and the, one of the Little Leagues, there's a large patch of grass. What is that generally used for?
Well, when you have teams and you have a league playing, you have a team, two teams playing, the other teams that play after that team normally show up about fifteen, twenty minutes or half an hour before the game, so they can stretch and warm up and get ready for the game. So right after the existing game is over, the teams that are playing leave the dugouts and open them up for the two teams. They come in and they're ready to go, so there's not a warm-up, you're not wasting time warming up on the field. You're ready to go, you're warmed up, you're stretched out, and you're ready to play. So those fields, and that area is being used for warm-ups, basically.
I get, you know, the problem that we run into, right, is grass is a commodity because of the use of water for it. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we are maximizing the use because there does seem to be, you know, strips here that seem to be of large quantity size, now they're narrow, but there are already trees there, there are already, you know, it seems to be shade there, and if we can utilize these areas to make sure that, you know, no one area is going unused, that's where I would like to see us heading. You know, we're going to have to share here at the end of the day, you know, because, you know, everybody wants a little bit of grass because it's nice, it's lush, it's cooler than, you know, even than artificial grass. So I would just like to make sure that when we are moving forward with something like this, that we are truly are utilizing to the best of our ability that grass that maybe is being underutilized. So when you say that it's the least-used field in comparison to the others, what is, how much, how often is it being used?
Well, the two fields, the two baseball fields are being used probably seven days, well, seven days a week with practices. There are only two fields that Little League can use, Recreation can use, that have the grass infield with the smaller bases, okay? And so those two fields, the fields one and, let's see, one, two, three, four, one and four are those fields. So the least-used is the softball field, and they might practice on there. We use it for, once a year, for the city's night event, what do we call that? The, yeah, the, yeah, Boulder City's Night Out, yeah. And other than that, it's used for practices for maybe some club softball teams. We do have an additional three different softball fields available for use, two at Hemingway and one at Bravo Field that can be used for these teams if they want to practice or have games.
And how often are those fields used?
Well, the high school uses Bravo Field, and we use our Hemingway Fields, the two fields for our adult coed sports, men and women's softball.
But you would feel confident that the amount of use here could easily be absorbed by the remaining?
Yeah, the three fields, yes, yes, I do.
Okay. It's only questions for you now.
Thank you. There, the city of Henderson has several of these dog parks, I believe nineteen. Do you know how large those are?
I believe they're about an acre apiece, so that's what I, that's what I heard.
And what would the softball field be?
Well, the softball field right now is, let me see, the one softball field is one point six acres.
Okay. And that field number three was previously used as a dog park, wasn't it?
That's, that's right. We, back when City Manager Dave Fraser was here, which I, you know, it all blends together with me, but a number of years back, we, he asked me to, the dog park owners, and we used that field for many years, probably five, six years, for a dog park during the early morning hours, basically, and whenever the teams were not playing on it. And it worked out, it worked out very well.
And why was that discontinued?
Well, we were having issues with people not picking up their dog waste, and it just, it just wasn't working out, you know, dogs were digging holes and that type of thing where, you know, the maintenance increased, we had to send a person down to pick up the dog feces, and it was decided that maybe that's not the best place for it at the time because it wasn't dedicated, and we were still using it for practices for kids. And that is, in my opinion, a hazard when you, when you do that.
So what do you foresee as being a different outcome this time?
Well, it would be a dedicated dog park, we wouldn't be using it for any games or practices or anything, so it's a dedicated, dedicated dog park from five AM in the morning till dusk, or dawn to dusk, and seven days a week. So it would be only a dog park and not for field use for kids.
Okay. With, you know, again, the skate park area or the grass area around the skate park was something I had suggested to try and avoid the use of any of these ball fields because clearly that's non-functional turf right now. The comments that have been made regarding, well, things on wheels attract dogs, you know, we're going to have that any place we put this unless we find someplace, you know, a mile outside of town. You know, there are going to be games going on at various times, there are going to be distractions for the animals. You know, I wish we could say that we know the exact perfect spot that everybody is going to want to use and that everybody will be accommodated at. I don't think that's possible. think that's possible, especially with the, you know, an objective that I had, we're not planting new turf because we've actually got acres of turf that need to come out under current state law. So to be looking at this as something of, well, we'll just find a whole new place and we'll create a whole new park, I don't think we're in that position any longer to be able to consider things like that. And I believe that you had said that the area around the skate park was five and a half acres. Again, I know there are some topology things there with the hillside. My suggestion was not to use those hillsides. It was just the fact that we had extensive area there that could be used and would require a fence, of course, just as these are going to require additional fencing.
The acreage?
Not a question there. I'm just making that point. With regard to the, how this is going to get managed, you know, we do have the other dog park that is run by a nonprofit that is nearby. I know I had spoken with people that are involved in that nonprofit prior to the pandemic, so it's two or three years ago. They developed what I consider to be a real concern, that the city was asking them to do things they were not in a position to do. I know my only conversations with them had been, what would you like some help with? And they had verbally given me some ideas on what they were looking for. I do think we can continue to pursue that with them. I think that it needs to be very clear on the part of the city that we are not looking to them to accept any additional burden. I know that was certainly not my intent when I spoke with them, but somehow they got that impression that they were being asked to do things they did not want to do. One of those, I think, was there's an area next to that existing park that they were being told that the city would go in and do stuff and that they would have to maintain. We should never be telling them what the city's going to do and then asking them to maintain it. So I want to be very clear that that park there, far as I'm concerned, it's standalone. If there are things that we could help out with, we should listen to them, but we should never be telling a nonprofit that we're going to give them more to do. So I want to make that very clear because of some of the comments that we've already received on that. As far as the use of this field goes, you've already made the point that there are three other softball fields available. That seems to be enough, as you've said. I don't have a problem with going forward with this field number three. I certainly would like to see some shade areas and that, but let's not get carried away either with everything. I think having water at the field rather than asking them to go to the concession station, if that's possible with whatever the plumbing is down there, I think would be a much better idea. The whole idea is to keep dogs away from people when they're not within confined areas. So if something like that can be done, I think that would be a much more practical solution. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, I want to make a comment, and it's probably to anybody who's listening to this. It was told to me that the way I described the nonprofit Sea Spot Run was in a derogatory term, and I didn't ever mean it that way. What I meant was, in terms of what we were looking at, which was a large area where people could have their dogs off-leash and run, that wasn't available at Sea Spot Run. I took my dogs there to run in that rectangular area, and hot gravel is not a good place to have dogs run. I think it's a lovely park. I think for what they do, it's great, and people are committed, and they've got great volunteers in that. So any comments that I made about it, we're simply looking at an option where people could have their dogs run on turf rather than, you know, on a gravel, gravel area and that. But for the purpose it has and for the people who enjoy using it, I think it's fantastic. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I've also had an opportunity to talk with some of the people who volunteer and run Sea, run Sea Spot Run, is that how you would say it? And I have to agree with the mayor that I think this might be a time with ARPA funds that we could help them. They've actually ran that dog park and done a great job up to this point. This is not in, to replace that, this is simply to add something, another option. And with that being said, I also think that we could possibly support them in maybe an upgrade there, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Tetter, are you looking for a motion or?
Motion would be great, just directing staff with the option you choose.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to make a motion? Councilmember Brid?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to make a motion to accept, whoops, I'm going to go here, the option number one on the staff report, Veterans Park Softball Field number three with amenities. And also, and I guess it came in as the update or an amendment to take out that line that said enclosed during baseball practices, games, tournaments, et cetera.
Sounds good.
Is that a sufficient motion?
It is, except for the last part you just stated about removing something.
Yeah, in the staff report, bullet point number four included the words, and, bullet point four, and, closed during baseball practices, games, tournaments, and special event rental. That should not be in there. This was, dog park could be kept open during normal park hours.
The corrected version's in front of you.
Right, exactly. I just wanted to make sure the corrected version was used. And that, we move forward on that option.
I'd second that.
I would like to have you restate the motion, please.
Sure. I would like to make the motion to accept option number one, Veterans Park Softball Field number three, with the description as stated on the revised.
You may want to consider input from Madam City Attorney and Madam City Clerk.
Yes.
I had it as for you to direct staff to accept option number two, which is site number three as a designated municipal dog park with amenities.
With amenities, yes. That's it.
It would be site one.
Yeah, that's what, that would be option number one.
Option one, right. The softball field number three.
Softball field number three.
Right.
That's it.
Do you wish to reaffirm your second, Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I reaffirm my second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
We have four aye votes and one nay vote from Councilmember Adams. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Next item is our last public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak during this period may do so on any issue. As always, we do ask people to be civil and concise, and speakers are limited to five minutes. Anyone in chambers who would like to speak? All right, we will take phone calls then for our final public comment period. The phone number is 702-589-9629. This is the final public comment period for city council meeting. Anyone wishing to call in? The phone number is 702-589-9629.
Hi, public comment?
Yeah, I suggest like two sections rather than three sections for that dog park they're talking about, big dog, little dog, that's all.
Can you state your name for the next one, please?
Yeah, it's Jeff Parker. I actually had the write-in comment earlier, but just two sections rather than three. It'd be not as confined. It would be big dog and little dog. Yeah, I would suggest like two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is our final public comment period. The phone line is available. The number is 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the final public comment period?
No public comments.
Thank you. Hearing no others, for our final public comment period, we will close the comment period and move to our last item, council reports. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, the only report I have is my continuing recommendation that if a resident is in need of assistance for rent or utilities, that their resource is available at Emergency Aid of Boulder City, and that they should call first and make an appointment. Also, they could participate in the food pantry, which can greatly assist people in amongst expenses. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I know that we have an upcoming, I think, is it May 17th? Is that the Tuesday at 10:00 at the Elaine K. Smith Building? It's ARPA fund discussion, so a town hall on ARPA funds. So please come and give your comments and tell us what you think. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox? Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Recently had a board of health meeting. Positivity rate for COVID-19 is on the rise right now. We are seeing an increase, obviously, in numbers in the potential spread of this. However, we, our hospitals are well-equipped, well-suited right now. There are treatments available. Please, if you have not gotten vaccinated, obviously speak with your doctor or physician about that. But we are not in the same situation we were two years ago, but it is something that we should all be aware of.
Thank you. And we shouldn't tempt fate. I was at a flag retirement ceremony this past Saturday that was provided by the Daughters of the American Revolution at the State Veterans Cemetery. I really appreciate the work that they do. Also, our local Boy Scout Troop Seven, they do receive some of the flags that have become worn over time. And again, there is a specific ceremony that is done to dispose of those flags, a very respectful way of doing so. But while I was there, also, the supervisor there for the cemetery mentioned to me, they would be more than happy if anyone would like to volunteer a couple hours, four hours, once, twice, three times a week. They are having difficulty, as so many employers are right now, in getting staff. And they could really use some help with just doing some raking, some sweeping, get you outdoors, get you a little exercise. They would be more than happy to speak with you down there at the veteran cemetery, if anyone's interested in volunteering for that. This morning, I was at a convention and visitors authority meeting. Good news, room tax is well above what had been estimated. People are coming to Las Vegas. The conventions are coming back. We were able to transfer some additional funding to the tune of about $78 million into renovation of the existing halls after the opening of the West Hall. That will help to accelerate that work. And the NFL draft, I believe the figure on social media impressions from the draft was somewhere in the neighborhood of 55 million contacts on social media. So to say that it was a big hit for Las Vegas, I think is probably an understatement. And also, we voted for a contract for the Formula One Grand Prix that will be coming to Las Vegas. Part of that race will be run on the strip, so that should be pretty exciting. Las Vegas certainly knows how to do things right. Again, appreciate all the effort from staff for the meeting today, and we are adjourned. Thank you.